Guys, we're gonna get going because it's already past 4:15. We're waiting for Sergio, but such is life. We have a lot going on tonight. Thanks all for coming. It's always nice to see people. It's rarely, this is, you know, we had a bunch last week, but I haven't seen anyone in years, so it's great to have you. We're gonna go, I assume you're here all about Act 46? Is that right? Anyone here? No? We're actually gonna not talk about Act 46 for a while in this meeting, so unfortunately you're gonna have to stick around because we've got some people with other things going on that they have to get out of here. So, I do not think we're gonna vote on the report we're sending up right now because it's not finished, so we'll probably do that early next week, depending on schedule. But we are gonna review it. We're gonna change the agenda around to some extent to get Paul on the road. So we're gonna, and we have to end by 6:30 at the latest. So what we're gonna do, Paul, is do the first few items on the agenda and then move to you.
What time is Frank from?
4:30.
Okay, and Christina's gonna come at 4:30. She's gonna have to sit tight too then, because then we're gonna do the budget and then the other items on the agenda in Act 46. Okay? Can someone send a piece of paper around? You did? All right. Oh, so we're lucky enough to be recorded tonight by Monroe Wiki, scheduled for BCTV to come and report us. That's lovely. He didn't let us know, which I find rather offensive and sort of typical of Mike sometimes. But if he would be willing to pay for all of our meetings to be recorded, that would be welcome, but he's generously stepping up and paying for this one. But he did not know. But it's always nice to be on film. I've been in front of the camera a lot, as have many of us. What were you passing me?
No, I wasn't. I was regreging. I filed a paper in front of you.
All right, so let's go ahead and start with the approval of the minutes. There are lots of them. Are we gonna do all of them?
There's only one on the night.
There's only one on the agenda.
A lot of thirty.
Okay. So there are a lot of work sessions, but we'll approve those next time.
I think next time. So I would approve the minutes from November 30, 2017.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Nope, thanks guys. Communications, we had a communication from Brad James and Don Russo Savage about the Articles of Development or the Alternative Garn structure proposal, and so we'll just review those with Christina and when we finalize and review also the work session. Did all of you guys get that? Did any of you have time to read it?
I did.
Did.
I did not read it.
Okay, so you're gonna have to dig into it some during the meeting.
Yes.
Any other communications? Schedule, we might need to do another, I assume we're gonna have to have another work session. I'm going up on Monday to be Scott's All-Day Conference about Education.
The Summit.
The Summit. So I'll be there on Monday. I can, what does Tuesday look like for folks?
I can do Tuesday.
I think I'm already with Tuesday.
I can do Tuesday.
7:30?
7:30.
Can you make it happen?
Okay, can you make that happen, Emily?
Yep.
Yep?
Is that gonna be a meeting or a work session?
I think it has to be a work session, because we have the work. Why don't we determine what it's gonna be exactly?
At the one of those meetings.
Okay, so welcome again. I welcome you all, but this is the time I officially welcome you. I'm assuming, hi, Betsy. You're here for Act 46, I assume? Okay, just so you know, we've got a bunch of business ahead of time, so you guys might be, you know, warming your seats for a while, unfortunately for you guys. All right, so other than that, let's dig into finance. Let's approve the warrants.
They're in front of you, Emily Wallace.
I move to approve the warrants of 12/14/2017 in the amount of $146,896.11.
Second.
Any discussions?
I reviewed those earlier on.
Yeah. All those in favor? I. None are opposed, are abstaining? Correctly passed. Thanks, Emily. Administrative report.
Yeah, so a couple of calendaring type things. Tomorrow night, the kids, our chorus will be joining the Groove Barbers at next stage for one number. We've done, there was a conflict of interest, so to speak, with the kids, because Dummerston has a dance, right? And the Groove Barbers, of course, was scheduled a year ago, and Dummerston let us know two weeks ago. It doesn't matter, when you're in middle school, you know, you wanna get to the dance. So what we're doing is, we've arranged to have them sing their number with the Groove Barbers just before intermission. Kristen Dahl is gonna bring down one of the mini buses from Putney School, and we'll whisk the kids off to Dummerston who wanna go to the dance. Yeah, seemed like a reasonable compromise. So that's what we're doing with that.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks. Next week, we have the Nutcracker performance for the kids. It's on the 20th. They'll be coming in the morning. It's the dance program from the Career Center, along with a few other kids. The idea is that they'll be doing sort of snapshots of the performance, explaining, there's an educational component about explaining what the whole ballet is about, the Nutcracker Ballet, and doing little vignettes essentially of it for the kids. That's for kids in K through five. We'll be doing that next week. We have had some conversation about, we do this every year, we review our security protocols, expectations around drills, fire drills, sort of the classic lockdown drill approach, which the district has been moving in the direction, I've explained this before, with the Alice, the whole Alice system. Dummerston had a training in the Alice system a couple of weeks ago. Two of our people, our PARRS, went and were pretty induced about it, which was great, because oftentimes the PARRS aren't in the loop, so to speak, with our normal professional development plans. And so they came back. Mirabeth Peterson did an excellent presentation for the full faculty on her take on Alice, which was great. And so we've made a commitment to include, we've been doing this, but we wanna renew our commitment to include a few elements of the Alice training each time we do a drill. And particularly with the primary teachers, to have them, I talked to Amy today about this, maybe on Thursdays, before they do their specials, they'll do some review and practice with the kids, so that it becomes sort of second nature. So that's nice. As part of our review that you folks are putting together around the Act 46 and so forth, in terms of school climate and culture, I asked Robert for a rundown, Robert Brooks for a rundown on the discipline referrals over the past five years. And what's terrific to report out is that we've seen a substantial decrease each year in the number of discipline referrals school-wide. So just to throw out a couple of numbers, in '13, '14, we had 591 for the whole year, 227, which came for the '678. And last year, we were down to 348 for the whole school, 122 out of the middle school. And thus far this year, we're at 86. And I don't have the breakdown, but I can tell you that that's the full number this year so far. So all of our work with PBIS, all the work with the school culture and emphasizing the positive school climate and so forth is really paying off. This little chart right here, which I haven't replicated for everybody, but it shows the average daily office referrals, excuse me, going from two-plus in '13, '14, down to less than one on an average basis so far this year. So that's all good. Yeah, that's all good information.
Can you insert that into the document?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll make this available, and I'll also condense these numbers for you into a separate chart. So I don't know if there's any questions about that?
Well, your numbers went from, it started at '13, '14, and then it went to '16, '17? Are those the years?
Yeah, those four years plus whatever we have until then, for '17, '18.
Has your classification of what determines a report changed?
No, not really. So in keeping with the PBIS framework, we have delineated what we call major offenses and minor offenses. And so all majors are reportable home, usually with a phone call and a discipline for a follow-up that gets put in the mail. Minors are reportable on form and sent home, just, you know, they're sort of minor transgressions. Challenge, of course, with anything like this, and we talked about this today at leadership, our leadership team meeting, is finality piece, right? So as personnel shifts, other people move into those positions, or people's attitudes around adopting the protocols sort of shift as well. So for what a minor might be in, say, first grade, just off the top of my head, might constitute a major in another class. And so we're always sort of talking about that. So what ifs? So what if this happens? Is that a major or minor? And then we help people sort of codify that in their brains about, well, this is definitely a major, so next time that happens, let's make sure we take that approach. So overall, I'm very pleased. I mean, I think that the work that the PBIS team has done, you know, we're in year nine, right, with PBIS. So the kids, with few exceptions to newer arrivals, they've had many years of this as part of their lives here at school, so it paid off.
So when did we do the staffing change? When, what year did Robert Brooks?
Oh, wow, that was the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, because he's in year five right now.
Okay. So that was a core part of the transition?
You bet. Yeah.
All right. Are we good?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I just have one. You may have gotten a notification that the SBA is asking all boards to consider using a school-related email address rather than a personal email address. So I think we'll put that on an agenda probably in January, so that gives you a little time to think about it. I've talked with Gary Parzick, our technology coordinator. He said it's very easy to do. Some of the reasons are, will be the same for all of us, easy for people to remember, but also if for some reason your email were ever needed to be used in a court case, your personal email being used would mean that all of that has to go to as evidence, and you could lose some stuff that you don't wanna lose, or have things available to others that you wouldn't want, so.
Do we need this on the agenda, or can we just agree that we're gonna do this? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, we already have one. Yeah. So if you could do that for us. I have one, which is not, which I haven't touched for several years, so that can be mine. I just need a reminder of what it is.
And then we have ptsbboard@wsse.org as well.
I actually think I know what yours is.
I'm glad you did.
Because it's how your Google thing shows up. That's how you show it in Google Docs.
Good to know. So we're gonna go forth and, well, that's it, right? All right, thank you. Paul, you're off. But before you go, I just wanna ask, are you here just to, anything specific, Jen?
Actually, it's connected to Google Docs, because I just shared my blurb, but I didn't share it with everyone because I couldn't access everyone, so.
Oh, you know, I just kicked a lot of people out.
But I can still, if you send it to me, I can upload it to.
Yeah, what's your icon on Google Docs?
Well, I sent it to you and to Emily, because you were in my system. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Feel free to stay. All right. Thank you for doing that, Jen, that will help. Yes.
Okay. My name is Paul Smith.
Turn the lights off.
Ah, no. I'm one of two curriculum coordinators in the district, and part of my job is to track data on the large-scale assessments that are required by the state and federal legislation, and to track that data and from time to time make presentations on relatively strict, let me get another log to just prop that up, level projectors. However, let me, and that's what I'm gonna do very briefly, is show you some of the data for Putney. But what I really wanna do is preface that by saying, the really important assessment data is the data that is collected in classrooms on a regular basis, on a daily basis, minute-by-minute basis. And we don't collect those data in a large bin, and we aren't able to project it, but that's the most important piece. This is interesting. This is useful data. Because it's consistent across the district and across the state, we can make some comparisons. But don't think that because I'm presenting this, this is what I think is the most important piece, okay? It's useful, it's interesting, but it's not the most important piece. Just wanna say that, Jen, to get started. Let's see, if I can make this work now. Let's see, that's there. Oh, goodie. Okay. So, and I'm gonna be really, really brief, because the last thing any of you wanna do is look at a whole lot of charts. So briefly, let me say, the large-scale assessment that happens statewide is now called the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium Assessment, or Sback. Let me see if I can get that a little bit more in focus, even though it's a little skewed. Oh, that's about as good as I can get, I guess. Is that it for focus? Huh. Back a little. That seems much better. Yeah, maybe the light's off? Yeah. Anyway, that's a little better. That's good. Statewide assessment in grades three through eight happens on a yearly basis. It's now happening in the spring. We had an assessment system that was working in the fall several years ago. So every spring, students in grades three through eight plus one high school grade, by the way, the high school grade is changing from 11th to ninth grade, starting this spring. Students take an assessment. The assessment at this point is computer adaptive. That is to say, a student sits down in front of a computer or some internet-connected device and answers questions, and the questions, depending on the answers, the testing software gives harder or easier questions, and sort of probes to sort of find a level for the student. It's a much more efficient system than giving every student over a very wide range a static assessment, because there are gonna be a lot of questions that are way too easy for some kids and a lot of questions that are way too hard for some kids. So this computer adaptive testing is actually more efficient in terms of finding what the student knows and doesn't know. And what they know and don't know is relative to a set of standards, in this case, the Common Core State Standards. So here's a, for instance, here are, I apologize, it's so hard to read, but here are different schools in the district, Academy, Oak Grove, Green Street, Dummerston, Guilford, here's Putney, Vernon, there's the middle school, there's the bar looking at the district in grades three through eight, and the state grades three through eight, and then the high school and the state at grade 11. So you got kind of in one picture, got a sense of where folks are. What's being measured is the percentage of students designated as proficient. So you can see some differences between the schools. Dummerston's up there at 74 percent. Putney's right here at 64 percent, sort of in the pack, maybe down just a little bit from the top couple. And relative to the state, well above the state average for three, oh, sorry, the district average and the state average for grades three through eight. Okay? So not the very top of the pack, but pretty close. Okay? Here is a demographic kind of breakdown for those students. This is the all-student group, and wow, I wish I could get that to be a little more in focus, but I guess I can't. So roughly speaking, the blue, this represents 100 percent. This is the all-student group. Blue and green are proficient, green is proficient, proficient with distinction is blue. Yellow is nearly proficient, red is below proficient. So really, what you wanna pay attention to is where is this line relative to this 100 percent bar? In this case, it's 45 plus 19, which is 64 percent, which is what you saw in the other slide. Okay? Glad that that all works out. Here's a demographic breakdown, females and males. So you can see that seemingly there's maybe a bit of a gender gap, and this is, by the way, this is agglomerated across all grades. Folks at the state would say, yeah, there's some validity to this. You can't really dump all of the grade scores, because there are different tests at each grade level, into one bin and do some comparison. But if we're gonna talk about the school as a whole, you have to do that. So statistically, formally, data-wise, it's maybe a little dodgy to dump everybody into the same bin, but I do that anyway, because it's easier for comparative purposes. But I'll show you breakdown by grade, because you will see some differences between the grades. But this is everybody in the school. So potentially, a gender gap in the English Language Arts scores across the school, that's something to pay attention to. Okay? Because we really saw 15 years ago, there was very, a very clear and very concerning gender gap that we thought we had kind of cleaned up, and we're sort of wondering, if this trend were to continue, we really wanna pay attention to that. Similarly, here's students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch versus students who are not eligible for free and reduced lunch. There is a poverty gap. And here are students being provided with specialized education on an IP, not on an IP. There is an IP gap, call it that. Okay? Here is, broken out by grade, grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, a comparison of Putney versus the state. And you can see in most grades, Putney students' percentage proficient exceeds the state average. Couple of grades, it doesn't. There is a cohort effect. You have cohorts, groups of students, students moving through who have relatively higher proportion of students who are struggling, and grades that don't. You also have some differences between teachers, and sometimes it's a little hard to sort out, but it's worth tracking on a grade-by-grade basis what's happening to each of these grades. Okay? So far. And I know, I'm just kind of running right through this, but I wanna sort of give a really broad picture rather than digging down in too far.
Paul, just a second. I remember there being a history of gender, there being a gender gap. So how long has that been going on for?
Well, as I say, I recall back when we were looking at the, I know when we were looking at the NSRE data 15 years ago, and up to, I sort of thought we had moved beyond the gap. I felt like things were really evening out, but this gives me a little bit of pause. This is, I feel like it's a more recent phenomenon that might be a year-wise thing we might wanna pay attention to.
It's just for the literacy test, not for science?
I'll show you the math in just a second. Don't have the disaggregations for science, because science is only given in fourth and eighth grade, and the sample sizes are too small. The only reason we can show these data, because the numbers are greater than 10. You had a question?
How are you interpreting this gender gap? It seems like it's a little complicated.
Well, this, as I say, this is popping up again, and in general, what would we think about that? So if we think, do we think that, we know that mindset has a huge impact on student performance, right? That is to say, especially with respect to math, but carry it over to English Language Arts. Students who believe that proficiency is almost genetic or a static quality, I'm smart at math or I'm not smart at math, I'm smart at Language Arts or I'm not smart at Language Arts, tend to have sort of a self-fulfilling prophecy. Students who believe that learning and understanding and strength in a topic is a matter of the hard work that I do, tend to do better over time.
I guess what I'm saying, the statistics, if you add them up, it's not because there are more females doing in the blue, but more males doing in the green.
So the way I look at this is I look at combination of blue and green, or conversely, combination of red and yellow. This bar is higher than this bar, right? That is to say, there are more, a small percentage more females in the nearly proficient or not proficient category. Right? Yeah, it's true. If you look at, you also have a greater, slightly greater percentage of females in the category, in the exceeding proficiency. It's worth, A, just tracking right now, but if, I would say, if we were to see a persistent 10 or 15 or 20 percent difference over time, we'd wanna start investigating that. What are, what messages are we putting out? What, how is it, is there some way unconsciously that instruction is favoring one gender over another?
Well.
Yeah?
Wouldn't the, on the special ed bar, wouldn't that be almost self-fulfilling?
You said it, I did not. So we're in a situation where students who have had to have demonstrated that there is a disability, that the disability has an adverse effect, and that specialized instruction will support them, those students are then doing this assessment, a very small percentage don't use an alternative assessment, but by and large use this assessment, and then we come up with a gap, and that's, yes, it's very clear why that gap might be.
It's really showing that the identification process is working.
Sure. And at the same time, we can't stop there. We have to go to a place where we say, and how do we make sure we do our utmost to give those students all the opportunities that they need in order to show what they know?
So are the students in special education, are they taking the same test, or are they taking a modified or accommodated test?
Most of, I would say, most students on IEPs are still taking the same test at grade level. There's no out of grade level. The testing software is designed to, as I say, downshift up or down, but there's limits. It's a couple of grades down or a couple of grades up, right? But by and large, they are taking that assessment. A very small percentage, less than 5 percent, are taking some alternative assessment. Those are severe developmental, sort of multiple handicaps, multiple issues.
Okay. How many kids opted out this year or last year?
Oh, yes, there are also some students, it's a handful, right?
Yeah, small, probably.
Does it get any better?
Probably five or six, I guess. Yeah, I mean, it's been in that range.
And those students would show up in the red as they were not, there's no excusing from the assessment, so they show up as zeros.
And there's no, it would be inappropriate because of that small pool to share what sort of level those kids would be testing at?
Oh, no, I think it's fair to say that pretty much without exception, they would have been in the high-performing group.
Right.
Yeah.
So do you guys understand that? Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's a fight we haven't made, but we.
Okay, so that was ELA. Here's math. There's Putney there, the Academy, Oak, Green, Dummerston, Guilford, Putney's there, 45 percent. So immediately notice, there's a difference in the proficiency levels for math versus ELA. But in terms of, in relative terms, again, sort of not quite at the same level as a couple of schools, but reasonably high and close to 47 percent for the district as a whole, and above the state average of 44 percent. Similar profile in both, but a 20-point difference in percentage proficient between math and English Language Arts.
Is that 48 percent?
Sorry?
Did you say 48 percent?
So Putney's at 45, 46? Gosh, I can't even read that.
46, yes.
Versus 44 for the state. And by the way, Alice, I have sent a PDF of this to you, and we'll let you distribute it to.
Thank you.
Okay?
I'm gonna, probably gonna put this in the report that we're submitting.
So here's demographic analysis for mathematics, the all-student group, females versus males. Again, we're seeing some, something of a gap, and that concerns me. I haven't seen that for a while, and I wanna follow up on that. Free and reduced versus not free and reduced, again, a poverty gap and a special education gap. Yes?
Are you including the K through eight versus the K through six? So when you're comparing, on the previous slide, you're comparing the K through eight aggregated score for all of Putney versus the K through six for the Academy?
These are, yes.
The one before, the one before, okay.
Yes, I'm aggregating three, that's actually three through six for Academy versus three through eight for Putney and Dummerston.
Okay. Thank you.
And then here's a breakout by grade level. Again, you know, sort of potentially cohort effects, small groups with a Again, you know, sort of potentially cohort effects, small groups with a few more kids who struggle, or some other factor. But some differences, some pretty clear differences, you know, blue is Putney, orange is the state. So summarizing, middle-high end of WSU schools overall for both ELA and math, at or above the state, and district average for ELA and math. Math is a, I think is close to or just below for one of them. Still seeing gaps in gender, SES, and socioeconomic status already. And disability groups, some big differences in performance by grade level. Okay? Those are the trends. Jen?
How does it compare to last year's data? Like, are these gaps in, by gender, SES and disability?
I didn't have a chance to look at that. I can look that up. I think we do want to start looking back. Oh, okay, is this, have we really had this? My recollection is not as strong, not, it didn't pop up to me, but I may have missed it last year. So yeah, definitely worth checking out. We've only got three years' worth of ESPEC data, spring fifteen, spring sixteen, spring seventeen. Right? So we don't have as much history as we did, say, with the handicap. And I wanted to insert that, this, and gaps still exist in gender, SES, and disability groups. That is the problem for us to solve district-wide, statewide, nationwide. Those gaps still exist. Okay? So here's the science. This will be the last set of science data from this particular assessment. They're changing to a new science assessment this coming spring. But these are the data from last spring. Here's Putney and the state for fourth grade and eighth grade. Again, it's percentage proficient. Fourth grade, eighth grade for Windham, for the whole SU, fourth grade, eighth grade for the state. So fourth grade, scoring higher than eighth grade. Putney compared to both the district and the state, scoring higher for fourth and for eighth grade. But again, you know, kind of a drop in percentage going from fourth grade. Okay? One more set of slides. This is fourth grade up here and eighth grade here. This is looking at some of the subcomponents of the science assessment, and comparing, state is the diamond, triangle is the district, circle is the school. And the error bars are simply an indicator of the sample size. You've got, you know, several thousand students there, a couple of hundred students there, and twenty-five students or so there, more or less. So in general, at fourth grade, inquiry seems to be the issue. And I think that's more about, I think that's an indicator of potentially some need for, let's go back to do some professional development on including inquiry science in the elementary grades.
So these are Putneys?
This is Putney, just Putney for the spring seventeen. This is just looking at the subcomponents of the test. It's not a scale score, it's not statistically significant, it's simply a percentage of total possible points. Emma?
In the inquiry section of that, I actually had a question about this for my son's scores. What skills are required to complete those sections? Is it heavily dependent on reading?
Yes, and interpreting charts. This did have a, at one point had a more hands-on. Over time, that hands-on piece has got less and less, and it's been more about interpreting data. Here's, here's some data. How would you set up an experiment to do X, Y, or Z? So, yeah, and we are moving away from that assessment because this, we aren't, it's not really suiting our needs anymore.
Right.
Okay? Eighth grade, in general though, I mean, Putney's scoring at or above state and except in inquiry for the fourth grade. There's eighth grade, physical science, earth, life, certainly stronger in inquiry in eighth grade. And I think that might actually just be reflective of the fact that by the time they're in eighth grade, they've had at least three years of departmentalized science instruction. That's the real difference. Right? Six, seven?
I'm just always confused why our numbers for science aren't higher.
Than?
Well, we have a full-time science teacher who we think quite highly of. And is it, so is it...
They're higher than, yours are higher relatively than either the SU or the state.
Right, yeah. But that hasn't always been the case. So this is, yeah. I mean, our numbers seem to be improving.
Yep. So one more piece, and this is, I'm a little reluctant to present these data. This is moving away from large-scale assessment data to the screening data that we use three times a year to sort of monitor progress of students across the year. I'm reluctant to show these data because these data change a lot during the course of the year. So this is a picture of the beginning of the year that we expect much more green, and we often get, usually get, much more green by the end of the year. So really, I want to sort of come back in June and say, well, here's what it looks like by the end of the year. But this is a quick screen looking at the indicators we use for kindergarten, first grade, all the way up through eighth grade. Starting in second grade, we use the same indicator for reading, which is a curriculum-based measure. It's a measure, words read correctly per minute. It's a, we have found, it's sort of both in terms of national research, but also our own research in district. It's highly predictive of success on large-scale assessment and of performance in class, these reading indicators. So this is, again, sort of looking at different grades. Where are we coming in? Students who, relative to national norms, we expect to be able to thrive in a regular tier-one classroom. Students who we have some concerns about, and students who we have a lot of concerns about, and we would need to make sure that they get additional support, intervention support, to get them back to where we want them to. So, but it's sort of a broad picture. We do look at data for all of our students. Here's literacy data, and here's math.
So this is sort of the two-minute experience the kid has with, they read...
Three, one-minute passages.
Do you guys all know what this is? Do you all, you want to quickly describe?
Sure, I'll describe it. For the RCBM, for the lower grades, we're actually using an interview assessment, looking at, it's highly predictive and really useful data in terms of looking at a number of components of pre-reading in kindergarten. Fall, we use a nonsense fluency word, nonsense fluency measure, and then a reading assessment for second grade that is sort of a leveled passage. Read, the student reads for one minute, and we're checking on the number of words read correctly in that one-minute period. The math assessment... Sorry?
They do it three times.
Three times, yeah, three separate one-minute readings. We take the median score for words read correctly, and the median score for corrects, and come up with a predictive score. For math, we use number ID, sort of name these numbers, and quantity discrimination, given two numbers, which is the larger. Those are timed tests. And the, for the second grade, it's a sort of a worksheet with a whole variety of problems that are useful in terms of being predictive of students' overall math skill. Okay? So it's a bunch of different questions, and again, varies for each grade level. It's benchmarked at each grade level. Sorry, I talked very fast and just threw a whole lot of data at you. Questions? I think really the sort of, this is the slide I want people to go away with. Reasonable scores, above, in general, at or above district and statewide, but these gaps are what we have to keep working with.
Do you have any Alex data to show us, or is that for...
I don't. I don't actually have access, because it's all, it's all in-house. I can probably get it.
Yeah.
Alex is a math, interactive math program that sort of provides a menu, a sort of a profile of students. It's a little more detailed than some of these others. Again, and the software is predictive, and a student gives an answer, that it's right or wrong, sort of indicating whether there's an additional skills work that needs to happen, or whether they can move on. I'm practicing white time. Okay?
So, I have a few questions.
Yeah?
So why is it, when do you get the ESPEC data after the test? Because for so many years, we heard ESPEC is great, because we get it back so quickly. And yet, the kids are not, the kids have put in a lot of effort, and they don't hear about it for several months. They don't hear their results. And also, we don't hear the results. Do the teachers hear the results immediately? Okay. It'd be great if, why was it so slow this year?
It was slow because, the official release was slow because the statewide data took a while to get computed. Right? The statewide averages, they have to do a lot of validation. In fact, what they have to do is they come up with a roster and a set of scores, and they send it out to all the schools and say, are these really your kids? This is what we have right now. Tell us if we've got it wrong.
And then they embargo the scripts.
Right, they prevent you from sending them out. However, we, I'm pretty sure we can send out preliminary individual score sheets before the end of the school year.
I would encourage us, or I would encourage us to have a policy if we need to do that, because I think there's so much invested. When kids take a test, they get the result. For them to understand that it's a test people pay attention to, there's value in them getting the results back immediately. Not only for the kids, but for the teachers and the families.
It would not include state comparisons, but that's okay.
Yeah. So is that something we can do?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Make it so, right?
Make it so. So can you do this again? A couple of years ago, you gave us an even more in-depth presentation with all of the data.
Yeah, I would like to, I actually seriously would like to wait because of their, that whole set of Ames Web data, I think are really useful and informative and look at growth within the year.
Right.
That's often, we don't get a chance to look at that, so, but you can give me a bit of time to, it wouldn't have to be the end of the year, but at least one more benchmark to give us.
But we also, I think, want you at the end of the year when we can see all the results of the testing.
Okay.
But, you know, usually have you only once a year, but you're welcome to come back a couple.
Sure, well, we can set it up for June. I think by mid-June, I will have all the data I would need to do that presentation.
Does that work? It's usually when we don't want to be here anymore, but... Okay. One last thing, females, males. What can we as a district be working on?
First, I want to make sure that that's real data. And Jen's suggestion of looking back a couple of years to see if that holds. Verifying that it's real data. The other thing I would want to verify is, is it happening at all the schools? Is it just happening at a few schools? But regardless, the next piece would be, let's start looking at, what's the unconscious bias here? If this is real data, if this is a real trend, why is it happening? What can, and you know, how can we? And I really do think that the more we emphasize mindset as a, you know, sort of, here's how you want to think about yourself as a learner, I think the more traction we get.
Is that something for the diversity committee, or is that off track? Once the data is assessed, if it's, if it needs to be addressed.
Sure, actually going through the diversity committee might be a real positive step.
Okay.
Very nice.
That's a great idea.
I'm just thinking of a way to actually make something happen.
Yeah?
At least have the conversation happen.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, you're welcome, Paul.
Safe drive.
There you go.
Okay, so Frank is not here, which is lucky for us, because Christina, we can jump in and have you give your presentation. All these folks are here, hey, Mike, are here for the Act forty-six discussion. Christina, so we're gonna start with you, because then we're gonna actually go back. When Frank comes, we have a tough budget.
Oh, I hate to miss a budget meeting.
I know. You haven't had enough of them.
Well, the presentation might be a little bit more than, more than I prepared to do, but I would love to just give people an update about what the AGS, which is alternative government, boy, I can tell I'm tired, alternative governance structure, and the proposal that a group of citizens has been working on for the past... Well, from Dummerston's perspective, we have started meeting in May. Brown and Brown joined in August. Vernon joined in August as well, I believe. And then we've had board members, Guilford just joined us officially as a school board, and we've had some fabulous Putney school board members joining us. We've also had citizens, because unlike, everybody's familiar sort of with Act forty-six and the process thus far, am I correct? Okay. So unlike a study committee where you have to have a certain statutorily dictated representation, Putney had one voting member and one alternative member, as did Dummerston, as did Guilford. Brown and Brown had five. On a alternative governance structure proposal, anybody can come to the table. And so anybody who shows up, come on, come join us, you're at the table if you have an opinion. It's given weights, you know, you're not monopolizing the conversation like any board meeting. So the goal of the group has been to try to find, well, the goal of the group has changed, because I thought that I would be writing alternative governance structure for Dummerston to go it alone. And it wasn't until November seventh that I found out, oh, there may be an opportunity for us to do it, to go forward in an alternative governance structure as a whole supervisory union. And so I think, from my perspective on the Dummerston school board, I think that that is the best thing for Dummerston. So I immediately put away all our work of Dummerston going alone, and started to work with all the other school boards to try to find a way that we could find the best pieces of the merger without giving up the best pieces of our local governance. And Dummerston has gone back to the community and asked what were the things that were really great about the merger? Something that kept coming up was what we're calling enrollment flexibility or limited school transfer, where if a family moves, or if a school isn't working out for a child, they would be able to move to a different school or stay in the school they're at. I don't want to say, people call it school choice. It is not school choice, like Vernon has for seven through twelve, so I want to be very clear. Because sometimes that word has been used as a, if you, or if a teacher teaches, say, in Putney, and they're a resident of Dummerston, and they want their child to go to school with them, I don't know if anybody would ever see it. There'd be a vehicle to have that, have that occur. And so we started to hammer this out as a group, and think about how we could do this, and what would be legal in transferring funds. And, you know, oh, we could share the ADM. And then it turns out, they've been doing this up in two reveries, this is their fourth year. They have contracts between the schools, and they allow a limited transfer of students between schools, which was what the merger was proposing. So this was the first, and I think it was one of the most important pieces. I know when Lai went up and spoke to the Board of Education, that was one of her first things that she listed as something that's good for kids. And it clearly became to all the people that came to the table, and all the people that came to our meetings and to our hearings, this was a very important thing. Act forty-six, though, really wants us to look at equity and efficiency. And there were some structures that came out of, and even the process. I think the process of going through the study committee was saying, oh, wow, you're doing that? That's great. You've got this food program in Putney, the sustainability thing? This is amazing. Or I believe when Frank was going through the Picas-Odin numbers, the efficiency study to show staffing, it showed that Dummerston had a lot of academic coaches. And everybody, oh, Dummerston, you are spending money. And Frank rightly pointed out, I think your words were, that's the best money spent in education. And everybody went, oh, okay, interesting. So everybody who's serving on the study committee had this opportunity to have cross-fertilization of ideas. And so how do we make that happen going forward? And I think that's the equity and efficiency that Act forty-six is asking for. So in our proposal, we've created a committee called the Equity and Opportunity, it's changed names many times. The Equity and Opportunity Committee that will have a school board member from every school talking about initiatives in their school, and trying to find ways to share resources to make this happen. Another thought we had behind that, if there could be money behind that, that would be wonderful. Changing money around in the state is tricky, so that's something that's going to require some thought if it would just be a recommendation. Through this process, Dummerston has learned how beneficial pre-K is. And we're really working hard to open a pre-K in Dummerston. And Guilford, the principal of Guilford, came and spoke to us. I'm gonna ask the principal of Putney to come speak to Dummerston too at some point to help us get our program going. of Putney to come speak to Dummerston too at some point to help us get our program going. So if we can, as board members, think about all of our students and find equity and opportunity for all of our students, we think this is a really great development for increasing the equity efficiency. Will it do everything that a merger will? I have no idea. I mean, I'm going to be straight up honest with you, I have no idea. Will it dissolve our boards? No, it wouldn't. And I think we all have to be mindful that the state might merge us anyway, even if we propose this. I think if we're not getting equity and efficiency, the state will come back. So there's nothing like having the state breathing down your neck to try to meet the goals of Act 46. So have I done a reasonable job at the big points?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think I have five minutes, so I think I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Does anyone from the public have any question for Christina? All right. You're good. Thank you very much.
Wow.
I know.
That was an easy quiz. Well, if anybody would like the draft that we have thus far, we have 14 pages of draft and so, they're available and I can, I could email it if you could give your names to either Ann or Laura, I'd be happy to.
Just one quick question.
Yeah.
Christina, so you said that four towns are officially working in the committee?
Yes. But we have representatives from every community for sure, yeah.
If the board here decided, could Putney become a fifth town?
Oh, we're a welcoming group. Absolutely. We like Putney. Yes.
So officially, they're not officially, Putney's not officially part?
No, no. They're not, no, they're not official. There's no barrier.
To clarify, we haven't, we don't have an Alternative Governance Committee, but we have one person officially sitting on that committee. And Laura is interested in being officially on that committee as well.
Christina, we just saw in Paul's presentation, an equity issue right here within the school in terms of gender performance. Is that the kind of equity you're looking at as well?
Absolutely. We've been really looking at the free and reduced lunch equity and the special education equity. I didn't really see that difference in our numbers very much when I looked from the top. I didn't do a deep down assessment, but I did see a lot of differences in the equity for children receiving free and reduced lunch and not. And I saw differences between schools. I think some schools are helping in different ways. I've been a classroom teacher too, though. I know when you have different schools, you can't compare. So I know enough to say that if you're trying to support 30, 40% poverty, it might look a little different in the classroom than 80% poverty. So, you know, but it, we are looking at those numbers and thinking about those things very seriously. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know if she has.
That's okay. No, it's fine. I said, yeah. Emily, go ahead.
Sorry, Jennifer. How are student numbers counted in the AGS that you're, does it?
It depends on what we're talking about. So if we're talking about, in the AGS, we do talk about total enrollment, the SU, which is just butts total enrollment. We're talking about per pupil cost, we have to use equalized numbers. If they're test results, they're just kids. So what is the?
Like the average day unit.
Oh, the funding formula for the, I do not think that, we are taking out a lot of that funding formula because I think that is something we would need to store in the future as to what the right way to, what that count would be. And I think the wording is that the situations in schools and the ADM would be taken into account in creating a funding formula for that. I really think the most important work of that, as we all talked about it a meeting ago, was like, oh my God, all these things that we could do, all these things that Putney's doing, how could we do that? How could we share resources? Maybe you can help us get going with something and vice versa. And so I think that's the bigger value. I think looking at staffing as, as boards all together and saying, this is what Picas-Odin says about staffing. And what are you guys doing? What are we doing? What's working? What's not? Put our own spin, let's put our own spin on the numbers from what we know here. But are we all doing things as efficiently as we could? I mean, I looked at even the cost of busing. We spend $900 per pupil for busing in Dummerston. And you guys spend a little bit less. Now, that might be you have less roads, but it's, you know, it's looking at those things and how can we do them more efficiently. Bratton Bro does it for 500, 400 and something. It's very annoying, so.
Go ahead. And then we need to wrap it up because we have to do the budget, guys.
Given the whole project you're working on, how far would you say you are along in it at this point?
So this project would, you know, if this is what, if this is the direction we go, this project's never over with because you can never become completely efficient. I've never done it, or completely equitable, and things will change. So in terms of what we think is, what the AGS group feels comfortable with and feeling like, wow, we're going to address a lot of the goals of Act 46 and we're going to do more for kids, I think in terms of the writing part, we're pretty much there. There's a six-month conversation period with the secretary, so there may be additional things we can do as boards talk about it. This is a living document. This is not an article that everybody has to vote on, boom, we're done. So there is a little difference in the process between what we're voting, what we're looking at here versus a merger. So, but we have a lot of data collection left to do. So we're getting it, we're getting it, so. Thank you, Putney, for having me.
I just shared, Christina, have you seen the Brad James email?
I have not, yeah.
Okay, so I just shared it with you. Because Jill and I both reached out to Donna Russo-Savage at this stage in our process. Because the concern, of course, is that we've been working towards Act 46 compliance with the understanding that, as Emily raised, how many students one has, the per student count. The AGS path doesn't address that. So we asked him several
Doesn't address how many?
Doesn't address increasing the student count per district. So he responded with a long list, a plethora of explanations as to why he thought specific questions that were raised by the AGS. I'm just thinking if I should read these. No, I think it would confuse things if I wrote them right out. But you should take a look at it.
That'd be great, yeah.
It's.
Can you share it in electronic form to me?
I did.
Okay. Oh, that's good. I think you were sharing with me now.
No. But they're very, they validate the concerns we've had all along at the study committee.
Do you mean the per pupil cost? Is that what you?
Yeah.
Okay. I think the number of students. I'm like, I don't think we're going to make more students in the merger. Okay, all right.
No, that would be great. That's ideally what we're going to do.
I'm not volunteering for that.
Yeah.
No, that is a path, if anybody wants to.
So just so you know, that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. That's definitely. Right now, we are not supportive of the AGS proposal, but certainly, you know, consider, do you want to?
I don't know. I would say we're all not supportive of the AGS proposal, but.
Well, no, but it's not, we don't, right now, it doesn't look like it complies with Act 46, although it has tremendous merit. And we're supportive of the process.
Totally supportive of the process, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we have started to look at that, looking at the Picas-Odin numbers and trying to, last night, we created a, I had sort of, this is what I do, Frank, at night. I think like, how could a spreadsheet solve my problems? And so trying to look at how we could take the Picas-Odin numbers and say, well, what is equitable in terms of staffing? And if the Opportunity and Equity Group could say, yeah, you're a Title I school, you could have a little more than Picas-Odin, but Dummerston, you know, you're not a Title I school, so maybe you really should be looking to do that and putting numbers in a spreadsheet to do that. I'm not suggesting that's what they would do, but it was a way to look at how we could consider, because the only way you're really going to save big money is to be adequately staffed. I'm pretty sure of that, I've looked at a couple of budgets now. And so how we could do that and do things efficiently and equitably, I don't think we know how it's, how it would happen under any circumstances. But to be able to start taking a look at that would really, and have a group dedicated to saying, hey, wait a minute, what's going on here? What's going on there? Would be really helpful. And I don't, and we could start doing that now. We don't need to, we don't need to wait for a merger to do that. We could actually all put our backs in and start looking at the numbers and looking at efficiency now. Nothing, I don't think they prevent us from trying to be better right now.
Christina, is it the, is it, my sense is that in contrast to what Alice was saying, that you're going to submit stuff to the state and let them weigh in on how well it does and does not meet the legalities and the goals, and then tweak with them back and forth, rather than that it would have to be certain to meet everything before it was sent in. Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Well, I would assume that's what the conversations would be about. You know, I think it would be, what about this? What about that? Because it's not a merger that has to necessarily be voted on and is done that day. They don't really flesh out. If somebody has some perspective on what a conversation involves, I hope it's not torture, but.
And Tom, I should clarify, we're putting the AGS proposal in our report. So it certainly is part of consideration. All right, guys. Yeah, thank you, Christina. Yeah.
Well, it's related to Christina. I heard Christina present on this before in a different setting and I was kind of impressed and didn't really understand why the board wasn't supportive of it, like you said. So I don't know if, I would be interested in hearing what the problems are while Christine is here so that she could address them because she's studied this for months and is pretty articulate on it. Is that a possibility, like you just brought up now?
Well, so we'd have to, does anyone want to address that right now? I mean, that's a full-fledged conversation and we can easily do that. It might be best when we talk about what we're, what our report is. Because right now, we are only here till 6:30 tonight and we absolutely have to have a budget discussion right now. Okay, Christina's welcome to hang out, but this is what we have to do right now.
I do think it would be good, but to.
Yeah, she's.
Spend a few minutes.
Do you want to speak right now?
About what our concerns are with the proposal?
Sure.
Well, my concern was regarding the numbers.
I thought I was asleep, but you wanted to.
Of course.
Well, I don't want to, you know, we've got Frank here as well, so I.
I'm just really concerned about getting the budget looked at by 6:30.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
So the fund?
Yes.
That's a half percent on something.
Well, so the fund, as I'm going to say, that would be up to the Opportunity and Equity Committee to say what that fund would be. Okay, so we've updated the language since then to say that would be, that's a consideration of a half percent, but.
Well, one concern that we've, we've had is that whether or not it's legal for a school or district to transfer money out of its district into a fund that isn't necessarily going directly back to the children of the district. Do you know, have you been doing any research on that?
So I've been thinking about that. And that is, that is definitely a legal question. I've been thinking about what about changing assessments at the SU level because how we assess schools for the SU funds is determined by our finance committee at this point and voted on by the whole SU. So I think we'd have to think creatively about how to do that and assure that we aren't running afoul of the law. I think that when you, I think of it as like the Vermont Neighbor Fund, when I think of it conceptually, which is, sure, one year it wouldn't maybe come back to Putney, but over the long haul, it probably should, you know. And I think the whole idea was actually really born out of when we were originally at Dummerston Group. It was people in Dummerston saying, how can we help a struggling school? Not how can we get money from somebody else. So it was born out of that notion. And so if the money, but then all the other good things sort of came along with it of how we could have a kind of level of inter-district communication that we had at the study committee level in terms of programming. And the money became less important, but the money was the first idea, like, how can Dummerston send money to a struggling school? How can we do that legally? And thinking about how that could happen. So I don't, it's now the money's a little less important, but I, my creative thought is through SU assessment that because it's all going to be managed through an SU, this Opportunity and Equity Group is just an advisory group to the greater SU that's going to make that determination. So there may be something we can do. And in terms of private funds, you know, that could go to maybe, if Dummerston, again, Dummerston's not asking for the money, but in the theoretical pre-K, you know, the equipment, maybe a private fund could be found to do the equipment to help Dummerston get a PK grant, so.
Separate from the ACT and?
Right, separate from that.
That's it.
So maybe this is a little sophisticated, but it would seem to me that if you all have an official member of this committee, that would be the place you could bring your concerns.
So we do have an official member of the committee?
Oh, I didn't know it was.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I read in the paper, it seemed all the schools except Putney had a number.
We do not presently have an official AGS subcommittee. However, by consent of the board, I am there and participating.
She's the representative.
Providing information to them, like our numbers and offering ideas and suggestions and opinions. I'm there and I am full participant and that's how they treat me. We just don't have an official AGS subcommittee.
Do the others, uh, school boards have an official AGS subcommittee?
At this point, every school board has an official, there's no difference on the ground. I think Ann put it very succinctly.
Excellent.
There's no difference on the ground. Everybody's welcome. And so, there's a matter of, if it's an official subcommittee, you better put it on your warnings, you better list your agenda in minutes and things like that. There's a different statutory requirement for you once you're an official subcommittee. So I think that's why the distinction is particularly made, but we have, we have welcomed Putney with open arms to our meetings and they have been full participants. And their ideas have been taken with the same weight as anybody who is official on there, so.
Well, and it's our understanding that she is officially on that committee. Isn't that right?
Yeah, we just don't have an AGS committee. I am Putney's official representative to that committee.
And again.
And again, you treated me just like anybody who's there officially.
Officially. You just don't have to, you know, you don't have to post minutes.
So just to be really clear, is there anything that would change Annie's participation in the group? Is there anything?
I think it would allow voters to know that, you know, the only, the real difference is that you have agendas warned in minutes. So that's helpful if people in town want to know what's going on as opposed to, we could talk about putting something at an SU level as well, but that's one more thing to do with an aging website that we're getting rid of. So, right? So maybe not the best use of our efficiency time, so.
There was an original question from over here and I'd like to repeat it because I haven't yet gotten an answer, which is why we don't have an official subcommittee from Putney. Wasn't that your question?
That's mine.
Yes, okay. Let's go back to it.
That wouldn't be mine.
No.
So are we good?
Do you have more questions?
If people want, we can, we're going to vote Laura on that committee tonight. If there's a need for specific language which would make people feel good, then we can go ahead and use that language. But it would not change what we are currently doing.
Yeah, no, my question was not that. My question was, I would love to, for the board members, for the, it sounds like the board, as Alice said, is not supportive of this. And I was just curious, what are the obstacles?
So I'm going to.
Two have been mentioned. I didn't know if there were.
I'm going to clarify that it's not that we're not supportive of it. Apparently, we don't see it complying with the law. So we addressed that quite clearly in the report and we're going to be talking about that report tonight. And I think you might be quite reassured. A lot of people are concerned, the folks in this room, what we're going to say. But what we're really sharing with the Secretary Holcomb and the State Board of Ed is what we have learned. And part of that is the work that's done, that's been done at the AGS committee. So you'll hear all about that, although not to a grand extent because tonight we really need to focus on the budget. So unfortunately, we have to do that before we come back to this topic. Does that work?
Thank you, Christina.
I want to go home now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Christina.
I'm happy to answer any questions, but Putney questions, I really want to make sure, leave them to Putney.
Thanks, Christina.
Can I make a motion to, what's the word, make it official or to?
Um.
Some more to the.
To make more, I'm official.
Company more, yeah.
Make more an official representative of Putney on the AGS committee.
Yeah, join Annie, yes.
Yeah, to join me.
So I move that Laura Chapman is nominated to join Ann Beekman on the Alternative Governance Structure Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I assumed we didn't need to discuss it. All right, that stands.
Alice, can you give us an idea of how long you're going to want for the budget so we know what we're doing?
I'm sorry, Tom. I would imagine that it's, what do you think? I'm just, I'm sorry, Tom, I would imagine that it's, what do you think?
So this is a preliminary draft. I think it would take at least a half an hour to, you know, get a sense of just the basic outline and then depending on to what extent we want to analyze it, could be, you know, another, another half hour.
Okay.
So is there going to be time for this discussion?
I will try to make it, make there be a time for it because you guys are all here. I am wondering if it would help you guys, because we're not being, going to be able to get everything done, would it help you guys to understand what we're writing so that, shall we take five to ten minutes?
We could take some time doing that, we could leave and you could do your budget.
Why don't we read the first page to use and then if there's going to be a tremendous amount of conversation about it, we can figure out the timing. We are going to have to revisit this next week because part of the report's not finished, a lot of it is, but why don't we just, so that you guys know, can one of you read these? Because I've been a sore throat.
Sure.
Or not these, read the first, you know, the letter. And again, this is a draft, not all board members have fully vetted it, there's some data that needs to be put in there.
I'm still finding sentence fragments, so.
It's been a work in progress.
Yeah.
Dear Secretary Holcomb, for the last two years, Putney Town School District has actively participated in our supervisory union's intensive Act 46 Study Committee process. Sorry, guys. We ask that you consider this submission as a report of our understanding rather than a declaration as to how our district best comply with Act 46 and Act 49. Putney Town School District has however many residents with economic education snapshot from census, oh. Our elementary school, Putney Central, has 174 students enrolled currently, 90 students are male and 84 are females, four are Hispanic, three are Asian, five are multiracial and 159 are white. The free and reduced rate of PCS, prepaid through eight, is 42% and this percentage is the best indicator for all Putney residents who attend BUHS as we historically see a big drop in participation when students go to the high school. Our direct certification rates fluctuate from year to year and sometimes from month to month. Putney residents also attend area private schools. Currently, we know the numbers, over 40 between private and homeschooled, attend private elementary schools and tend to attend private high schools. We don't have the number on how many are out of district yet, but we will. Do you know that, that happened? Oh, sorry to interrupt. That's okay. The challenges facing PTSD have been acknowledged by the school board for several years. In 2013, we created a five-year long-range plan to address the issue of decreasing enrollment, increasing costs and our inability to offer the programming our students needed. When Act 46 was becoming law, we put aside this plan as education law was addressing many of the challenges we faced and our energies were required to address compliance. This September 2017, Articles of Agreement is the core of our report and we submit it with caveats with notions on particular articles. These articles, as of yet, are the best path towards providing equity for our students and sustainability. The report has been generated over the last two years by the WSESU Study Committee that was chaired by Alice Loughlin, our board chair. Richard, I can never say his name. Thank you. Another PTSD board member was also an invested member of that committee. The articles, including the other components of the report, were vetted consistently for over two years by our entire board. We also submitted a draft of Alternative Governance Structure Proposal. This proposal addresses the concerns of those in our community who believe that changing our governance structure dramatically decreases local control. It is the position of some that this proposal addresses equity and sustainability without losing what they most hold sacred. In light of the results of the November 7th vote, we encourage the Agency of Education to evaluate this proposal on its own merits. Along with these, we submit our own brief analysis and brief analysis of educational opportunities and stability in Putney. Sorry, just down there. The pre-K school strengths and weaknesses, thoughts about how the Brattleboro Union High School could better serve our students and our understanding as to why Putney voted the merger down. In summation, we intend to provide you a snapshot of education in Putney and the tension that has surrounded our considerations respectfully. And then, we have, so a lot of people have contributed to this information. Almost, Frank hasn't yet, although we worked on the articles, obviously. Lyle hasn't, but that much, a little bit. Herb has done some. We've all been chipping away at it in these work sessions and Jen O'Donnell has added information to it. Lindberghski, Nancy Gagnon, who else?
Matt Bristol.
Matt Bristol.
Pingao.
Pingao.
All of our teachers have been asked.
Several of the teachers are going to contribute. They've all been asked to do so. What?
With Arlene.
Arlene.
Steve has.
Steve had.
Arlene Scott is our nurse, if anyone doesn't know that, sorry.
Laura has done a lot of research about the history of Putney, capital funds, capital investments and student counts. We're doing a paragraph on debt, taxes and sustainability, poverty. Laura's done a fair amount of work on our poverty and the lack of affordable housing, which we think is the root of the problem, rather than, you know, what's Act 46 is directed at. We're talking about a programming and enrichment achievement, which is what Sergio and Paul and Lyle and Herb will chip away at. Talking about universal meals, our youngest citizens, which a whole chunk of them are in the pre-K program, but we're addressing the zero to five. Annie's going to write a little bit about Brattleboro Union High School.
Actually, I did.
You did? Great.
That much.
Contribution by our legislators, middle school. One of the concerns we have had, at least one of the concerns I have had, and we've addressed some here, is that since the Articles of Agreement were voted down, we do not have really a say in what's potentially going to happen to the middle school. The Articles of Agreement were very supportive of middle schools staying in small, a school like a pre-K to eighth grade school like we have. There was a lot of interest at the study committee in either Dummerston and Putney sharing a middle school or not losing one of the middle schools that are in this neck of the woods. So what we were wanting to do was really give Brattleboro residents the option of coming here. We also know a lot of our kids want to go to Brattleboro, they want a larger setting. And so we would hope that whatever happens, whether it's the AGS proposal or another or a merger, that that wish is granted to sustain that. We talked about specials, after-school programming, things that we would like to do, talk about language and winter sports. You know, it's going to be about 50, 50 pages, I'm told. Well, maybe not 50, maybe 30. But that's, that's what we've been working on. So basically, it's an education snap, snapshot. And what we need to do, and we won't get to it tonight, is really define why we think, there are particular articles that were discussed and re-discussed and re-discussed at the study committee, topics that people are very passionate about, articulating why people are passionate about those, making suggestions of how those articles could change, you know, such as a small town, some people would like the small, a small town to be the ones deciding whether to close a school. We'll discuss that. The current Articles of Agreement, which were voted down, had a large, a member of Brattleboro residents, that made people unhappy. We understand why that made people unhappy, so we're going to address that. We're just going to explain why, the many reasons some people voted it down. So that's what we're doing. We'll have a firmer draft by Tuesday, I would imagine, by the end of the next work session. We want to wrap this up. All the time next week is very tight. So, that's where we're at.
Is the point of including the merger documents, is it the board's sense that, that despite the vote, the state board would be well-advised to do the merger? I mean, is that, is that sort of the, the point of including the merger documents in, in this document that's being sent to the, to the state board? Or maybe the way I should ask it is, what is the point of including the merger documents specifically? Not the information from the study committee, I get that, which is voluminous and valuable, but the merger proposal as a, as a part of Putney's offer into the state, what, what's the board's sense of why, why do that?
We want to offer suggestions as to alterations that we see now might be a better plan that we're, but we're also including the AGS proposal as well and encouraging the AOE to consider it on its merits. I can't support less democracy, so I say try. If that's what people want to do, I'm willing to pass it along and say, consider this, please. It's more democracy, but not less. That, that's why I felt, we, a number of us felt compelled to also include the AGS proposal as well.
No, I meant why include the merger proposal?
Because.
That seems like less democracy.
No, because if that's, what we've realized is that at this point, the AOE will make the decision, not us. So, if it's going to make that decision, we'd like to make comments on changes, we'd like to see in the merger documents.
The way.
Yeah, they're just, they're just ideas. They're, some of the ideas that are presented, we'd like to make some alterations to them. We don't want to leave them as they are.
Does the board have a preference?
Some of us have one preference, some of us have another. We're not as.
We're not unified.
We're not a monolith.
Okay.
Want to, you know, one thing I think about is that if the state is going to merge us, I would like them to consider leadership councils in that decision. And if they don't have those articles with those leadership councils, that, that's specific to our articles in our SU and not to other mergers that have happened across the state. So if it's going to happen, it's important to me that they consider the work that had gone into and the thought that had gone into figuring out how that would happen.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the state has their own Articles of Agreement, right? That they can apply to us at the end?
They will.
When they, yes.
I imagine.
So, those Articles of Agreement could be completely outside of. They, they could, I, I'd be surprised if that happened. But they certainly could.
Okay.
So, I'm going to just interrupt, so, I'm sorry, about five more minutes here and then we do need to go into the budget and then if there's time, we'll come back to this. Some of us would have to leave. Okay, button Mike and then Anne.
Just like to add a couple of things that have come up in the last couple of weeks. There have been questions put to legislative legal staff as to whether Act 46 actually gives the authority to the state board of that to impose a merger and that's not clear. The other piece that hasn't been legally clarified yet is whether, without an affirmative vote of voters, whether properties can change hands. In other words, a merger could be imposed without the properties that were supposed to be sold for $1. The only other alternative would be if they were taken by eminent domain and it's not clear that Act 46 authorizes that to happen.
We've seen those opinions, but we can only move forward with the December 26 deadline with what we've got right now.
Should I understand what you're trying to do, but I think the idea that the state's ready to impose something, I'm, I'm not sure is, is going to happen.
I'm not sure either.
There's some big holes in Act 46 and Act 49 that might have to be looked at again. So I think, I understand you have to.
Yeah.
You have a deadline as a board.
There are deadlines that you have to meet.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
But the short answer is, we don't know what's going to happen and forcing a merger is within the realm of possibilities. It's not out of the question. So, that's where we have to move from. If they're going to force it on us, I'd prefer that we do it on our own terms. I would hope that y'all would agree with me on that one.
Would it be acceptable to the board to say that?
Tom, can you?
In the letter?
Can.
Not in those words, that's not how one makes an official report, but.
No, but in the cover letter to say, to say, respecting the voters, we would like the state to look at the AGS. If the state does insist on a merger, we would like you to look at our merger documents.
I think that we actually did say something. It is something very similar to that, that it is the position of some that this proposal addresses equity and sustainability without losing what they hold most sacred. In light of the results of the November 7th vote, we encourage the Agency of Education to evaluate this proposal on its own merits. Is there something you would want to add to that? Is that not thorough enough?
I, I thought the this referred to the merger documents.
Oh, no, that refers to the AGS.
Yeah, that refers to the AGS documents.
Thank you.
And did you have a question?
My personal problem with this process is that I feel like the voters overwhelmingly voted one way and the board is continuing to pursue another direction. And it feels to me as though that's not being responsive to the will of the people. And like, I just have real problems with that. So I, I appreciate individual board members speaking to the question of pursuing something that's been overwhelmingly voted down in town and how that works for you, individual.
I feel very strongly that more democracy is better than less democracy and I don't think that the vote of the people should be disregarded by the AOE. But it is not within my power to make them think about it. So I've put something in this document, I personally wrote something in this document saying, please consider it in light of results of the vote. That's all I got. I, I can't make them do what I want and they can't make, they can make me do what they want, that's how the law works. You know, they can make me have a driver's license, they can make me do what they want. Yeah, because I do think they need to consider the voice of the people in Putney and in the surrounding towns and all over the state. I, I hope they're listening, much like I hope the federal government listens when we complain about them. Vermont's probably going to be a little more responsive.
And in that report as well, I've been summarizing the feedback from the survey and so there are paragraphs in there about what Putney values and very clearly stating local school boards and local schools, which was the gist of question number four on the survey. And I don't, I don't feel like we are pursuing the path that was voted down. I feel like we're providing the state with all the information that we have and have researched and have collaborated on so that when they do make their decision, they have all the pieces that have been considered. And I, if they are going to merge us, I do want them to consider our articles and not state articles. So, does that answer your question?
We're giving them everything we've got. Laura's been in town.
Actually, it's very helpful.
Yeah. I've even scanned every letter to the editor that I could lay hands on and that will also be attached, so.
John, and then, guys, I'm sorry, but we've got to wrap it up.
Just in light of this, Laura, when you read the executive summary, I think you read, we believe that the best path to equity and efficiency is the merger. And so that would, to Tom's and to Anne's point, would actually say, no, we, the board, believe, if those words, if you could find those words.
I'm looking.
I wrote it down as you, as you read it, would clearly say to the board, this is what we prefer. And I think if I'm, if I'm hearing you right, Anne, that that would go against what the vote of the town was. That it's not, the town is not saying, we believe this is the best route to equity and efficiency. That it's not, the town is not saying, we believe this is the best route to equity and efficiency, yet the executive summary that you're offering to the board says that.
Perhaps we need to change the language. Again, this document, we tried so hard.
I get it.
We worked on it by day.
Honestly, reading it out loud, who's the first to understand?
It is true that of all that we have been presented and worked on, all the alternative paths we have worked on.
Right.
And we have worked on them for a long time. And I've been on two alternative committees. A year and a half ago, I've probably spent 30 hours of my life on those committees. None achieved equity or sustainability to the extent the articles do. So we are acknowledging that. It would be foolish for us. We, we could say we would prefer not to do them. I don't know if we would say that. But we're not disregarding the fact that thus far, when we, when we look at these things, that has been the best path.
But that's a, that's a question of the opinion.
So can I propose something here?
Yes, and it's our, it's our job-
Sure.
Maybe compromise? Um, if we, we can certainly adapt the language.
If we take out this one sentence, I don't think it takes away from what the articles are, and I think it leaves the judgment up to the AOE.
Agreed, the sentence as it stands.
Um, so if, the, the sent, the portion of this as it stands right now is, um, the September 20th, 2017 Articles of Agreement is the core of our report, and we submit it with caveats and notions on particular articles. If we take out "is the core" and maybe make "is the, is part of our report", that might be, I'm just playing with this, we don't have to do this, but. Um, and then it says, "These articles as of yet are the best path towards providing equity for our students and sustainability." I don't think we have to have that sentence. The report has been generated over the last two years. It can, we can just take that out.
I think that's a very important sentence to delete, because that sentence, if I were the state reading it, I would say, Putney believes this, the merger is, and the articles submitted there too, are the best route- Towards equity and efficiency. And that's clearly not what the, the members, the voters of this town have said.
So if we read it this way, can everybody agree that it's still, that it, everybody can agree with it? The September 20th, 2017 Articles of Agreement are part of our report, and we submit it with caveats, with notions on particular articles. The report has been generated over the last two years by the WSCU, SECU study, yada, yada, yada. Does, is that okay?
That's fine, we know that this group is going to go through at least one more work session, and we will be continuously adding, editing this. I think it's totally fine for us to take that out now, but do know that this group is going to continue to chip away on it. There's no doubt that that sentiment you hold is held by a portion of the, of the community, and we certainly acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we do need to move on. You've taken that note?
I did.
Okay, sorry, guys, thank you. All right, Frank, we, do we need an executive committee before, would that be a good time?
Uh, well, we could do that just for a second, because thank you for, for moving things around.
Moving things, what do you mean by moving things around?
So we can have this conversation and not go through the budget for this, shall we?
Yes, we're not, unfortunately, we're gonna shorten the committee, the budget committee. Okay. So why do we need a mi, can you explain why we need an executive?
Do we have to stop the-
We do.
Well, we have to discuss why we're going to executive-
It would be a good time to transition.
It's a personnel issue relative to FY19 budget.
Does someone want to articulate that?
I move that we, isn't there specific grounds about-
Personnel.
Personnel. Okay, I move that we enter a technical session to discuss a personnel matter.
I second it. Any discussion, all those in favor?
I.
Unopposed?
No.
Thank you. We're rising, thank you very much. All right, so we're starting with the budget.
Okay, so everyone has a, a document?
We don't need an action. No, we just rise. All right, Frank.
So we have a copy of the, of draft. Let's see. Um, including a capital plan. Documents? Yeah, excuse me. So initially, yes, we, we were considering about a 1% impact, but the document you, you have, you go to page 16, is, is closer to a 2% impact. Um, and that is as a result of looking at the capital plan and integrating the funding assumptions that would go with that. So, um, maybe, maybe that's a good place to start, just because as you, you have just heard, uh, the vast majority of the budget is generally level funded. So, uh, the, the major increase that you see in there is the capital plan, thank you, I'm gonna do the digital version. So, we have, in our current year, I think 15,000 budgeted, and if we want to move forward with our subcapital items, um, I'm proposing 50,000. Uh, so that's the, that's the source of going from a 1% to a 2%. So when we look at the document there, um, the fiscal year 17 is a good place to start, because that's our audited, or I've got a draft audit, they, they haven't turned it into a final report, but, essentially audited, uh, fund balance, 160,000, 133, you see that under fiscal year 2016, 17? That, that's where our capital fund is. And this is after fiscal year 17, doing the first of two phases of a fairly significant roofing repair. That was at 54,000, 150. This summer, we completed a second phase of the roofing improvement, 67,000, 810, so that's, that's been done, that's an actual number. Uh, the total for the year, uh, this, this year is, um, as you see there, if we are gonna move forward with this freezer walk-in unit and with a shed that, that's been talked about for quite a while. Um, Herb and I have discussed that over a two fiscal year period, 25,000 the current year, and 35. The idea there would be that it would be a, a June, July, August project. June, this fiscal year, July and August, this coming budget. Um, and then we, we had previously included the 7,000 for the range and 7,000 for the fire suppression. So, if we roll with this plan, which, um, at this point, you know, it had been previously committed to, of the 107, 67's already been spent.
Right.
Then you can see what it does for our $160,000 balance. If we've only appropriated 15,000, which is the current number in the budget for this year, 107, uh, spent out of 160, but then add in a $15,000 funding source, leaves us with 67,000, you see, almost 68,000. Which is awfully thin for a capital plan, but, you know, we've been here before. So you see, for fiscal year 18, with the plans that are proposed, and this is where we might want to revisit those plans, um, but if we were gonna do the, uh, fi, sort of final repair, uh, it probably wouldn't be final, but a repair on the roof, the 5,000 for exterior painting, the 15,000 for the phone system and the wireless system upgrade, the 35,000 that gets us the, the, the food service shed and freezer, that's 63,000. Uh, you know, that, if we didn't budget the 50, you see the 63 would have to come out of the 67, and you practically have no, no capital fund. So that's why I proposed this 50,000, it keeps, it, it keeps a, a capital fund, and then when you look out at just a couple of years, you see that at this point, we haven't identified urgent sort of projects that need funding. So if we sustained a $40,000 future commitment to capital in the general fund, it's part of the tax rate, you know, we start to get that fund to recoup. You see, we go from 60, uh, what is it, 55 to 60, and then to 85.
Is this built into the present budget as well?
Yes, the 50 is included in this, and where we see that is in the district-wide spending, it's on page eight, and it's under planned building maintenance. It's two-thirds of the way down the page. In the proposed column, 19, proposed, you see, uh, $50,000 in there, that's, and you see in the current year, 15, that's what those numbers, um, represent. So, that's a $35,000 increase, and, you know, with your budget about 3.3 million, every 35, every 33,000 is a percent. So this is a little more than a percent of the, of the total increase. The, the rest of the budget, we, you know, we certainly can give you, um, as much insight as you would like, um, but the, you know, the major drivers are staffing, of course, and, um, staffing is pretty much level funded. Um, we do have some relief with the, uh, healthcare. You may recall, I've reported before that the premiums have dropped 30% from fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 19. And, and we have built in what VHI has requested a 10% increase. So they've gone down 30, they're asking for a 10% increase. Uh, but that 10% doesn't go into effect until January of 2019, so for us, it's a 5% impact. Of course, we're not seeing a 30% savings in healthcare, because we are brought in the HRA benefit as part of collective bargaining, and, and that, that is a response to a substantially higher, uh, deductible that the employees expected to pay as part of the Affordable Care. So, so the HRA mitigates that to some extent. So for example, on the first page, you see that we budgeted a $37,000 decrease in health insurance. Where it says K-8 Health Insurance, first page, a few lines down. 11,210 is the proposed, down 37,000. But then you see some, some figures have no, uh, comparative basis in fiscal year 18, the HRA, so still on page one, you know, big decrease, but then we have this, the $4,000, 3,200, and the 4,800 increase. Those, that's the HRA employer, um, benefit. That, in total, we're still down quite a bit, 37,000 minus those increases is still a significant reduction. So that, that also is helping, um, keep us down, uh, in, in total. We did, as Herb explained, or, yeah, as, as Herb has referred to, we did, uh, try to simplify our after-school program, uh, budget presentation. That comes in, in the, the, uh, program 0140 on page 13. Essentially making the same level of commitment to those programs. Uh, but, but we've, we've tried to simplify it, so when we implement the, the programs, it's easier for staff to choose an account number to charge, charge the activity to. But I think as, if you, if you, as you leaf through the report, you'll see, um, you know, substantially level-funded programs. With the, um, the one exception on the capital.
Yeah, certainly the level service.
Remind me when the CLA gets-
Yes, usually appeals get processed through the town office, um, and notices would come out in, um, in, uh, mid to late December. So it could be within a week, but usually it's definitely before January 1st.
Does everyone understand how the CLA affects the art budget? Do you touch base on that?
Sure. And let me, let me put it in the context of this document. This document is the one that we normally publish in the Town Report. I, this is definitely a, only more of, almost just a, a framework for discussion around tax rates. I wouldn't-
Don't bet your life or else.
Yeah, I would, I would, there's no, yes, there's no certainty about-
No share.
About the, the, there's no certainty about the numbers. So let me, um, let me just discuss what you're looking at. You, you were asking about the CLA, and the CLA is, um, on this document, it's all part of, this is an AOE, uh, document developed by Brad James, it's part of a legislative requirement. It's called the Three Prior Year Comparisons. So, CLA adjusts what a school board equalized cost per student, and, and therefore a equalized tax rate, to account for the changes in, in the, uh, real estate market, um, over the past 12 months. So, the CLA number is on line 32, you see that in the middle? So, uh, we're, we're kinda starting in the middle of, of a lot of different moving parts in the school funding formula, but, doesn't really matter where we start, it's, we're gonna end up at the same place. But you see that the CLA, what it does is, as I was saying, it takes the Putney School District, uh, Board recommendation, if we, if we go to fiscal year 18, based on the board's recommendation for spending of, uh, up at the top, 3.3 million, divided by, I'm sorry, 3,000, 3, 13,000, you see that? The, divided by 173 kids, which is on line 15. It, that equates to 17,339 per student. And the state says, well, you're gonna measure that, your spending in Putney against line 28. There's this little number that they make hard to read, but you see that says 10,000, 076. So they're, they're taking our number, 17,339, and dividing it by 10,000, 076, and that's the tax rate for the Putney School District. Uh, 170, you're 170% of that number, or when you get it into a tax rate, 1.707, that's the same number, it's just getting it into a tax rate format. And then they say, here comes the CLA, well, if, if, if your properties were, uh, selling at what your town office has assessed the tax value of your properties, if they were selling at the same number, there would be no adjustment. But the state is saying, we're in this altogether, across all towns. So just because the listers haven't reassessed, uh, values in Putney, let's say for five years, and your next-door town did the reassessment yesterday, the state is saying, it's unfair for one town's residents to be paying at a current market and another town getting sort of a pass. So they, this is called the common level appraisal. They, they get every sale in, in every town across the state every year, and they average the difference between the tax-assessed value from the town office and the actual sale price of properties that have sold. And then they bring that number in, your number is 103%, 103.6. So they're saying that, on average, your properties are tax-assessed higher than what they're selling for. And they're going to, you see, instead of your, your tax rate being, um, the dollar 98, it's the dollar-
56.
56. I'm sorry, dollar-
Dollar 19.
19 versus dollar 15.
Sorry.
Yeah, 1.15, yeah. Okay?
Goodness for you.
So, so that's the, that's the equalization, so we're all paying basically theoretically, but, but, you know, there's, I don't want to distract the conversation, but just real, real quickly, if you happen to have a couple of major properties that sell very differently than the tax assessed, in smaller towns, causes a really big impact on that statistic, and it's problematic. But anyways, but, um, may, maybe back to the general introduction of the budget. You know, with a 2% impact- impact, you might think that we are set up for a pretty reasonable tax impact. Unfortunately, you, you, you know, I'm sure you've been hearing about, well, the yield number is not going to raise as much money as we had hoped, and if schools spend on average three percent, then we got to start out with a nine cent tax increase. So I haven't factored in all of that stuff, but here's, here's where we are starting from, which is a difficult place from a tax point of view. When you look at this document, I brought in the three million three seventy, you see that on the first line there?
Yeah, it's horrendous.
So that's your draft as of today, and I'd say I know it's going to be subject to change, but the, the two hundred and thirty-nine thousand in revenues, I have to, I have to look much more carefully at, at that, that, that right now is just taking things like, I assume our tuition students who are here in the fifth grade and I think at the sixth grade are going to be here in the sixth grade and the eighth grade, you know, I, I don't know that. I'm looking at Title One grants, Title Two A. Here's my initial estimate of revenue, but I, I know that's going to change, but two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, okay, line ten. So we take our spending of three million three seventy, we subtract our, our revenue that we're not asking the taxpayers to fund, which is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and we get this equalized, we get this, what is called education spending, and, and then we have our new equalized student figure, just got that today, otherwise I would have had this.
That's the dynamic.
Earlier, yes. And it's not significantly different, but unfortunately, it's down point seven of a percent, it's almost a percent. So if everything remained the same and our equalized student go down one percent, our tax rates immediately will go up one percent unless we find more revenues or cut some costs, because that's, that's the, that's the nature of a cost-per-student funding model. So there is.
Which is why, which is why more students is better.
More students.
The merger.
Yes, because.
The merger.
Exactly, yes. Because we know, on average, we can probably add as many as, you know, Herb would know, five kids per grade level and not have to hire a new teacher.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't say that across the board, but yeah, sure.
You know? So that's, you know, seven grades, that's thirty-five kids. If, if I gave you a, a number of thirty, up thirty-five kids here, this, this, instead of a hundred and seventy, divide this by two hundred kids, you would, you would be a tremendously lower tax rate. But anyways, our initial number right there is pretty simple, our proposed budget of three million, three minus two hundred and forty-nine thousand in revenues is divided by a hundred and seventy-two kids is eighteen thousand one forty-four. And you turn that into a tax rate, it's a dollar eighty-six for the Putney School. And the problem is, I haven't adjusted for this lower yield. So when I do that, that number will be quite a bit higher.
So is everyone else looking this ugly?
This, I just got this information this morning and you're the first one I've had the conversation with.
So guys, do you see the, what this does? We are seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars over the threshold.
We get penalized for that?
Yes, we do.
What's the penalty?
So.
So the penalty is.
Per student, seven hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can't possibly, I mean, sorry to Frank to interrupt.
It's seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars per student?
No, that's not the penalty.
The penalty is, is on line twenty-six, okay? And it's seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars per student under this draft, okay? And what, what the penalty does is saying, oh, you're, you have a eighteen thousand one forty-four cost per student, but we're going to tax you at eighteen thousand nine hundred and three, because they're going to take the spending over the threshold and add it to what you are spending. And that's how, instead of dividing, dividing a base number by your number, eighteen one forty-four, and getting, you know, a, a tax rate, they're going to divide by eighteen thousand nine oh three. And what that says is, for every dollar you spend over seventeen eight one six, they're going to tax you double. That's what that equates to. And just why we're sort of sharing bad news. Get it all out, get it all out here, let's see, I, I.
Is that the take-home in my minutes for this budget? Is that we're over our threshold?
You, you could say that under a very preliminary draft, you know? And normally, the administration wouldn't propose a budget that's over the threshold. We didn't know it until.
Until today.
We got it.
So the idea is, this is a proposed budget that we're going to be looking for.
Yeah. It would be appropriate for us at this point to say, perhaps, we want a budget that does not take us over the threshold.
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
Which is. Get the red pen out. Yeah, and, and yet we.
The black and blue pen, actually.
The black and blue pen?
Yeah.
And we haven't, we haven't even started to talk about the budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just threw that out there, but would that be the consensus of the board to, to say that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, it's certainly not inconsistent with, you know, what we've done in the past.
We, one year did go over, I don't know why Jim would let us do it.
Yeah, actually, it was two years, and I did give you, you had asked for a little bit of a look back and, and I can give you that if you like.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Not that Jim, we would let, you know, we're the ones who make the decision, but why didn't he kick us and then we?
Call him. He's still, yeah.
Does he really?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Why?
Can't help it, so.
But does he, he doesn't, he's in the finance office?
Yeah, first of all. At Greenwood, yeah.
Greenwood?
Greenwood, yeah.
Wow.
Blutton for Punch.
Yes.
Well, not really, I mean, it's one district, one.
One tiny.
Yeah, it's, it's a difficult job. But this is, so Alice has asked for a little historical data, so we just, just put this together and we can go back earlier, but that's the data that, that I know in the format that I, I either contributed to or created, but prior to that, I'll have to call you.
So this can go in our report? Thank you.
Sure. And you were, you were asking about going over the threshold, so you can just see it in two years there, and, and threshold is third line up from the bottom, and it looks like in two thousand fifteen, is actually, I guess that is the only year on this, on this schedule, just once, yep, two thousand fifteen. And, okay.
So what makes that number change year to year, the excess spending threshold?
The legislature sets it, so we, so it, it's introduced to us and you would have seen it in that, maybe, maybe the commissioner didn't put that in the letter, the commissioner sends out, the tax commissioner sends out a letter to all school board members that came out.
Maybe.
Yeah, supposedly it's to all school board members.
Did you also receive an email from Brad James?
I did, already, I did it earlier.
Oh, great.
Interesting, no data on this letter.
I didn't get it either.
Okay.
Who's stretched?
Yeah, so.
Slip it into you to share the bad news.
Huh, November thirtieth, yeah, it, it came to me from, maybe it was the School Boards Association, I'm not, not sure.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find it.
Yeah, but we can forward it to you, but, yeah, it's introduced from the, the legislature requires the tax commissioner to do a forecast of what property, school property tax will raise, and then they, they make a forecast on what the legislature should consider as a starting point for the statewide property tax. The legislature then debates all kinds of different, you know, issues that require funding in the, in the state, not obviously a lot more than just education. In late January, most school boards have, have submitted preliminary budgets, I report those to the state, the legislature looks at preliminary budgets, often will revise the, the statewide property tax, and they're now talking about yield number, essentially is, we all start at a dollar for statewide property tax, and if you spent that number ten thousand seventy-six dollars, your tax rate would be a dollar. I don't think there's a school in the state that does that, but that's how you, that's how we all start, and the state does that based on this estimate, well, what can, what can a dollar of property taxation raise? And then unfortunately, we, well, we go to town meeting and unfortunately, oftentimes they've changed these numbers again sometime in the, so they're all estimates. So I think that's, that's all I have to share at this time.
Guys, should we go through this page by page, or since it's level-funded, do you want to?
Well, there's a couple of changes I could highlight for you.
Yeah.
That are really almost more clerical in nature than, than not. So we're starting on page three, if you look down about mid-page, you see the tech support line item there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've had two things happening that are related to tech, well, three, actually. One is just sort of the stipend, the tech stipend, and that's, one of the teachers gets that, right, as a sort of in-house tech support person, and that's, that stays as it is. The other was that we had technology support integration in two sort of separate places, and one line item was, I think it was nine thousand dollars or something, and then we had this other thing, twelve thousand. We didn't access the nine thousand, we just paid down, well, no, we did access the nine thousand as an account item, I think we spent the eighty-seven hundred or something last year out of that, and then we had this twelve thousand there, basically unspent. So, we've consolidated that into the, into, where am I now?
Page three.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the tech integration at the top, it says ten thousand, that's going to, that's going to basically be it for those, that's why that tech support in the middle is from twelve thousand to zero, okay? The guidance salaries for a year, actually two years, we carried sort of a consulting piece, which is no longer something we're going to do, so that explains the sixty-four hundred dollar, I guess I'd call it quote savings there.
Yeah, she's pretty good on her own now, huh?
Yeah, she's.
Yeah.
She's got her legs.
Now, not, yeah, and, but not surprisingly, she still, she still does the informal consults, I think they had breakfast once or twice a month.
Yeah.
Which is great.
I would do.
And very generous of the other person. So, I'm looking, oh, Frank explained the planned building maintenance increase there on page eight. On page nine, we had, at the top of the page, just made a slight change in, in the budgeting around the fuel balance between oil and pellets, in anticipation of using more pellets than we did last year. The security salary, that was something that was sort of a legacy item, you see it right there in the middle of the page, twenty-eight hundred, just going to get rid of that, we don't need that, we've got our security system such as it is, up to date, and that was really in response to some concerns in the past that we no longer have. I don't really, I don't think, oh, page twelve, four items up from the bottom, that's the algebra slash reading program. We had for a few years, prior to Mary Beth Burbrick, been, been using an online algebra program that was basically a subscription, that cost us a little under twenty-five hundred a year to do. We're no longer doing that, we, we use, for the online piece of the work, the Kids Use Khan Academy, which is free, and actually is a far superior program to what we were in the past paying for. So that's not necessary, eliminate that. On page thirteen, the, the summer programs salary, this is really more of a note to myself than, than, than a, a numbers piece here, because there's no, there's no real change in the budgeting of that, but just that we need to, Frank and I had spoken about this, we need to consolidate a number of these summer program issues into, into one little piece, and that's going to happen.
You mean the paying and the lack of paying and the?
Well, well.
Various approaches.
It's mainly budgeting at a very, very kind of finite detail level, and, and then when we implement the program, oftentimes, different budget categories are charged, so there's just a mismatch, but in total, we're seeing a pretty consistent investment of about thirty-two thousand, as you see, in those, in the summer and co-curricular programs.
Are we seeing that here?
Yes. Page, what was that page?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen, you know, when you look at the total of the groups there, see at the very bottom page of the page, thirty-one thousand and seventeen, and then we actually spent thirty-two, and then we budgeted thirty-three, and we're proposing thirty-five. But it's been, you know, a consistent sort of level of, of activity and.
So what's the twenty-one for?
The twenty-one is more co-curricular.
Meaning what in this situation?
So that's your sports programs.
Not the summer?
Not the summer.
Not the summer.
That's what we've separated, yeah.
After-school sports?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
How could we be paying, I don't understand that. I don't understand, I mean, it's not a ton of money, but where's, how's that money allocated?
What are the sports, you're saying?
I mean, yeah, how, I mean, we're certainly not throwing that money into.
No, but we have, we have transportation related to sports, sometimes with buses, we've got coaches' salaries, we've got expenses for equipment, uniforms and all that stuff, that's all under that heading.
I can't imagine, I.
Oh, we can break it up. I mean, I can't do it right now.
Yeah, it would just be interesting, because we've been talking about how we're not putting money into that, those programs. I mean, we've been floating around that.
Well, so, well, I think that this highlights, probably highlights, one of the things Frank and I were talking about earlier today, that, that the, the, the drawdown on particular accounts and things that have been charged against a particular account is something that we need to, we need to sort of consolidate. I don't know exactly, I can't tell you right, sitting here right now, exactly what was charged against that and why that number's there.
That's not summer, summer camp busing, isn't it?
No, no, that's a separate.
You see that?
I have it all together.
It is in there?
Well, no, you see the separate line, you see the very bottom, summer.
Program.
The twenty.
Summer program transportation.
Yep, the three thousand, and then we, that, we did increase that to sixty-five hundred this year over prior years, you see that at the very bottom? So that, you know, that, that is part of the thirty thousand that's been dispersed for the programs.
I don't want to micromanage anything, it just would be interesting.
That's fine, I mean, we could do, you know, as part of the next step, I mean, it's certainly something we can look at in terms of the breakout of how that was charged out, that would be reasonable to do, it's not a problem.
Because it seems like with summer programming and perhaps investing more money in the enrichment, in enrichment in summer program and during the school year, which, you know, I see Brattleboro having, is this great programming, and granted, we know it's because they have more funding due to the amount of their students, but.
Sure.
I'd just like to really get a realistic cost of what we, what we're dedicating to those.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, that's totally fine.
Just, I mean, I am looking at the activity in the account.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I have a few names, but I'm just giving you sort of the cycle of, of payments, you know, so we have some activity in, in, on July, July and August, quite a bit of activity of that fourteen thousand, it looks like eight thousand is dispersed, and then, and then again, a little bit in November, so I, I don't know if this rings a bell in terms of like, is that a basketball kind of event or, or soccer, and then there's.
That would probably have been the soccer coaching.
And then the painting in February.
That's all I like. That's all I look, $500 bucks.
The $1,400.
Yeah.
And then we have $3,600 paid in June, so, yeah, we can give you the details on what activities are being paid for. Don't forget, though, there is a significant amount of revenue that is generated for these activities, summer program and the co-curricular. If you were looking at a prior year budget, and we'll have the revenue side of this for your next meeting, the revenues for summer programs budget was, I think it's like $11,000, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we actually raised about $11,000 in revenues associated with the summer program, so.
How many?
About $11,000.
Why did the bus more than double summer Berlin transportation from '17 to '18 and carry over into the proposed?
Yeah, I don't recall the increase, so is there a special grant or something that we were going to commit to? Let's see, maybe it's in our, maybe it's in our budget notes, we...
See if you have a note on that, because that doesn't ring a bell to me.
We've got a great system, and we just got to make sure we use it. I was logged into the prior year, so it's taken me a minute to get into the current year.
I mean, maybe it's, has the program expanded that much, or more kids are getting picked up?
No, I think from my point of view, I think it's probably an oversight on my part. I don't know, I don't know why that ended up there, do we have a note of it?
Let's see, I almost got that point. I'm sure there was good reason for it, because we, that would have been a $3,000 increase, and there's no way Mr. Staley would let that stand in, I remember that process, I don't know if you remember.
Yeah, I remember very fondly. I, the other thing too that occurs to me around the co-curricular is winter sports in there? I think it might be.
Must be.
I think that's it.
Must be.
So, the winter sports is like $6,800 or something total?
On top of, that's the baseline, once you get, but what's the income for that?
Right, so the income.
Probably part of that.
Is part of it, yeah. It's probably part of that $11,000 that I'm referring.
The field trips.
Because there's no way we took that much in, in terms of the summer tuitions for the camps.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so winter sports, Laura, you had it in the direction of thinking field trips? That's not a, that wouldn't be a field trip thing.
Well, that's level two, or more than, am I misreading this? No, you got it, yeah. So, both those lines are...
It's interesting that those, those are exactly the same lines.
Yeah, they're exactly the same, and they've got...
What's that? So, one is the sub-toll of the other, so, yeah, you just have, you have one line there.
Okay, I see.
You see, it says field trip education, it's just the sub-toll.
So, it's the summer programs is being, at the function is field trips?
Yeah.
The summer program transportation, okay.
Yeah.
So, I wasn't reading it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I didn't have any, I didn't have any notes, I had $6,500.
I just missed it, I guess, that's good.
Okay, well, we know we need to find some savings, yeah.
So, we can, so I don't know if people have anything else?
There was one thing, I was, we were talking about foreign language, and an online program for grades three through five.
Yeah.
And whether it's being used, and whether that's a, I don't know how much it costs, but I thought it was something that was being paid for, but it didn't sound super effective in its use.
Well, and it didn't sound like it was being heavily used, I think.
I think that's probably fair, I just asked people a couple of days ago to get back to me in the three to five realm as far as their use, it's much more heavily used in the six, seven, eight in the middle school, because Gao Ping has effectively integrated into her language instruction, and she'll probably say something about that. Yeah, so, I asked them for a quote for a particular number of kids in three through eight, based on our number, and they haven't gotten back to me yet, so. I think its utility really is excellent, I think it really depends on the teacher, and the whole thing about making time for it, you know, as to whether or not there's a buy-in there. I mean, I've been viewing it the past couple of years really as a beta sort of test to see exactly these sorts of things, like, so how much time and how much priority are you going to give it? You know, starting in third grade, certainly the kids, second grade even, really the kids are paying attention to keyboarding skills and so forth, so when they get to those tests, they can accomplish, you know, maneuvering through the S-Back, for example, without a lot of pain and suffering. So, you know, teachers on an individual basis make those choices, I trust them and understand that they're making the best choice and the best allocation, use of time that they have. I think all of us would like to have an extra hour or two on the school day, frankly, in order to accommodate some of the things we would like to do, but, you know, so choices have to be made, it may well be that we say, okay, let's just bump it down to five through eight and do it that way, yeah. I think, I think that they, it was pretty reasonable, I mean, initially, they were talking about $10,000 for the school to do it, and then we worked it down to, I think it was like $6,700, $6,500 or something. And if it's clear that it's not being utilized, then we can ask for a better rate, and do, like I said, do the five through eight. I think five is minimum place, four would be even better. But, you know, it's intended to be an introductory experience to language and culture, and I think in that regard, provided teachers implement and support it to the best of their personal abilities, it's excellent, I really do, yeah.
And you've put out feelers to find out how they're engaging with that?
Yes, I have, yeah, and that was just a couple of days ago, takes people a few days, I need to remind them.
Yeah. They're like, gosh, I gotta get on that now.
Yeah, well, I mean, it really, you know, I visited a school in Middlebury, I forgot the name of it, elementary, similar to us, similar structure to us, and the principal there, this is three years ago now, I guess, or two years, three years ago, was just gaga over it, just felt like it was just an awesome program, and in her words, had, you know, quote, transformed the school as far as their approach to language and instruction, and just the cultural aspects of the program too, you know? Yeah, so, we'll see, I think, I think it's worth keeping.
This is the Middlebury program.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And have we spoken to any of the high school language teachers about the effectiveness of our middle school program?
In terms of Chinese?
Well, any of them, the number of the kids for last year studied through Duolingo in the Middlebury program.
Again, I really think that unless someone has experiences in the home around language, for Spanish or French in particular, nobody's going into level two anything at the high school, so.
But I've talked to kids who can't answer first-day foreign language questions.
That's entirely possible.
I mean, literally, I told a kid what his teacher's name was in German, and he had studied German all last year, and I promise you, those are first-day lessons, the very, 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 very first day, what someone is named and the word for teacher. And it's not the only, because I speak a little bit of a lot of languages, so always harassing the children with them if I find out they're studying them, and it's something I'm finding, not invariably, but quite frequently.
Yeah, so, I think my only response to that would be that, again, I think that the buy-in on the kid's part plays a large role, if a kid says they're doing it, and the teacher's sort of monitoring them as they work through the lessons, I mean, there's varying degrees of engagement and involvement with it, and it's not graded, so it's not intended to be, it's intended to be an enrichment activity, not something that's going to prepare you for the next language, next level. I mean, and some of the kids I know had done sort of quarterly, done different, you know, sort of dipped their toe in different languages, done a different language each quarter, which I think is one of the nice things about the program, yeah, yeah. So, we're paying attention, I mean, I don't, I don't want to spend money that's not well utilized, but given the number of kids that we're serving for the investment, it's pretty reasonable, yeah.
Are other schools using it too around the SU?
I don't think anybody in the SU is, no, it's fairly widespread throughout Vermont.
Is it in Vermont, so it's from Middlebury College?
Yeah, yeah, I think, to be honest, I think they were just, they had some sort of contractual arrangement, but it is based in Middlebury.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think the woman who's running it now is actually the former lieutenant governor of Massachusetts, recognized the name from 15, 20 years ago.
It's an interesting building, there are people, teachers, and there are like enclosed cubicles so that they can be talking to students, and so it's really an interesting place.
Space-agey or something like that.
Well, there are big, like, satellite dishes out around, and, yeah.
Is it a laboratory of sorts where there are who?
Well, they're really more providing a service, so the level one sort of service is what we get, which is, you know, you do it yourself with your teacher's support or community support. Level two is you can engage services of a teacher to not so much run the class, but to sort of track the class and then do sort of tutorial-type things, and then level three is you have a fully engaged teacher dedicated to your program, which, you know, obviously matches up.
Yeah, yeah, provides a lot of flexibility for places, at least in what they need.
Yeah, I mean, particularly for smaller schools and more remote areas even than we are, it's great, it's a smart business model for sure.
And this is a nitpicky question, we still have an Asian Studies program?
Well.
We do?
The Asian Studies program, the line item is our share of Gao Ping, that's...
Ah, I see, okay.
That's what we're paying, so we share that, right, with other schools in the district who works in, I believe, four schools, am I right, I think?
Definitely Vernon, Dumerson, and maybe after-school or...
Yeah, okay, so it's at least three, and then the Freeman Foundation, which had been supplying over the years the bulk of that, has been each year tapering their support, imagining that, you know, the district was going to think this was a great idea and pick up the expenses affiliated to it, so that's where that comes from.
Thank you, that was very confusing to me, because a long time ago, the Asian Studies program was more obvious within Central.
Right.
And I haven't seen it, so, it's a share of Gao Ping, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's what I believe is true. So, is there anything else, I mean, that's it, I mean, I think we'll take this back, and I'll see what I can do to cut it back, and I'll consult with Frank and Lyle, and we'll do our best to bring down a slightly trimmed version next time.
Yes, and keep in mind, we did $65,000 use of fund balance this current year, and I didn't assume anything for starters, so you may have noticed that spreadsheet I handed out that had the sticker shock, that's excluding utilizing $65,000 that we used this year, so when you don't put that in, that, this is another factor. So, we either find $65,000, or we go reduce spending by $65,000 if we wanted a neutral impact. Our fund balance is about, it's going to be somewhere around $50,000. Right now, it's $118,000, we're planning on using 65 of that as part of this current year, so that leaves $50-something thousand, so that would be the maximum.
Anything else, folks? Do I hear a motion? Do I send that? I'll do a favor, I need a post. Okay, folks, we're here.
Thank you, everybody.